So, everyone is ready. Do we have everybody here? We are, yeah, we're good. Um, okay, I will call this meeting to order and I'd like to recognize that collectively, we are on the unceded territories of the First Nations within our regional boundaries. I could have someone move approval of the agenda. Moved by Director Crompton, second by Director Elliott. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, and we moved 3.1 yesterday, so we're good to go on that, Director Clark?
No, if we can, if we can pass that motion again.
But I don't need to read it. If someone move 3.1?
Correct, correct.
Moved by Director Elliott, second by Director Birch Jones. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And now we have four regional moment, Electoral Area A. Welcome Director de Maire.
Thank you Chair. I've got two videos we're gonna, we're gonna show. And they were both funded through NDIT, through the BRVCA Economic Development Committee. And at the time, they were designed for tourism opportunities and to get people up into the valley. After these were developed and shared online, the, the school that we have here in Goldbridge for the valley is just an elementary school. And they just go up to grade seven. And then from there, the students and families, some of the families just leave the valley and to get into a high school. And at one point, a few years ago, we had two students in school. That's it. And basically, we don't want to have any teenagers in the valley at all. Living full time. So they took clips out of these two videos and created a program, Live Where You Play. And through that, the Association Economic Development Committee, they, they would fund one month free rent or one month mortgage payment if people moved up that had children. So today, we've got 10 students in school. And people live up here. Some of them work remote, remote, you know, virtually. And some travel to jobs out of the valley and then come back. So it's pretty good. Like this year, I think we're gonna lose four students that have to go to high school. But, so these two videos are, was the start of it. So Natalie, if you could share them, please. And ones for the winter and ones for the summer. Uh, we don't seem to have sound, Natalie.
Welcome to the heart of British Columbia. Welcome to the heart of British Columbia.
Looks like the internet connection wasn't as good as it could have been. But those videos have been seen and shared quite a few times. And, uh, yeah, so the next piece for, for the valley now, for the BRVCA is actually the component I talked about yesterday. Was to work on, work on all the extra visitors that we're getting now to help mitigate any impacts with respecting neighborhoods. Recreating responsibly and, and also leave no trace. So that program will be started this spring and, and we'll welcome visitors. That's it. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much. Anyone have any questions? All right. Well, I look forward to visiting when we can again. Um, okay, let's move along to 5.1, CAO verbal update.
Thank you Chair, nothing to report today.
Okay. And now 5.2, the 2021 to 2025 budgets, restart eligibility lists and uses. Good morning, Director LaFrance, welcome.
Hi, everybody is slowly coming up on my screen, but, uh, so I guess we're gonna be discussing the regional budgets. This will be the third meeting for going over these budgets, so I'll just review the changes. So the requisitions, the consolidated requisition shows a, sorry, a 5.4% increase over 2020's requisitions, which is $103,586. So the average taxation actually only increased slightly. So a $500,000 household would pay 72 cents more. But that's just the average. So that changes within each region depending on how your assessments changed over 2020. And also, within each region, the taxpayer will show other variables in there as well. Further independent taxation increases or decreases. So overall, it shouldn't impact the majority of the taxpayers, but of course, that's just the average. So general government shows the biggest increase of 13.5%. And that's to, due to the new positions we've added in the previous round of these budgets. I have just drilled down and tried to get them to the exact expense needed for 2021. So the additional staffing, we've estimated the manager of human resources to be hired made first. Legislative coordinator to be hired July 1st, the grant administrator to be hired August 1st. And all of these are within this, these current budgets that you're looking at. So the 2022 salaries for general government shows all those positions at their full annual spend. Of course, the benefits had to be increased as well. And we are still showing the doubling of the wellness benefit in 2021 as well. So those new people have been prorated with the wellness benefit as well. I did adjust the, there's a new project in general government for the virtual town hall setup. Originally, it was just placed as audiovisual live streaming equipment. And that was only, I believe, $11,000. And now we've got a quote and we have a grant. And we're gonna be offsetting the remaining amount that isn't covered by the grant with the COVID-19 restart grant because it's for having actual, you know, a virtual town hall system at the SLRD office. And that full project now is 70, oh, sorry, I just gotta get to that right spot. 71,000. And it'll be using 49,300 of the COVID restart grant and 21,700 of a CEPF grant that we have been successful for. Originally, this project was in emergency management because it was geared towards having the emergency side, the EOC town hall. But really, this is for all of SLRD and will benefit the board as well. So it's now moved to general government. And any questions on that particular project? I'll just pause there.
Don't see any questions.
And the other changes for general government, I just updated any new board resolutions for funding. So there was the area D, I mean, any funds for the Kenya Beach Dock added. And we can go over the COVID-19 restart grant for general government if, if that works. For 2020, I have 92,196.81 being used from the COVID restart grant for a variety of things. Extra hours worked, supplies, conferencing solutions, the extra cleaning that was required and some laptop purchases and the staff entry net costs as well. I have added that to the COVID-19 restart grant. And some time allocation from, you know, the various departments that had to work on COVID-19 protocols, policies and other MN work in their own services. Also, within general government, we still have the allocation to the other services for their approximate uses of the COVID-19 grant. So I put through, I went through what I could find in the 2020 financials and just did an estimate for 2021 based on the 2020 financials for each kind of area. I kind of grouped all the refus together, the fire departments together, the recreation services together to give an idea of where we're at with our current spend of the COVID-19 grant. And it looks like we will have a remainder at the end of 2021. And currently, the province wants us to spend the COVID-19 grant by the end of 2021. But they have mentioned that, you know, there could be an extension. That hasn't been confirmed though. So I have an estimated remainder of $127,917.66. And on page four of my notes, there is potential additional uses that we could discuss, which would be further renovations to the SLRD office, more plexiglass to separate the open areas. There are still offices that aren't in an office, so they are open to more people walking by. And maybe a touchless door entry in certain doors that have a high, high usage. And potentially more additional recreation facility support. Excuse me. And potentially, we could get some consulting on SLRD business continuity planning. We have done that internally, but really, it's been off the side of staff's desk and, and we might need some kind of consulting assistance. It's just, it's just a potential usage. And area C transit, I know I spoke about this before. It is servicing vulnerable population, so we could potentially use some more support there. Other IT projects. And there is also the opportunity to support local nonprofit organizations for food security and support for vulnerable persons. So all of those don't have to be decided right now. There is time to, basically, the spend is within the budget. How we are gonna be spending it is not within the budget, but the actual expense is there. So I won't have to amend the budget again. But we would want to just decide potentially as the year unfolds, the best usage of the remaining COVID-19 restart grant. So any questions on that and anything else with the general government budget?
Director Elliott and then Director Richmond?
I was aware that we were, we were actually allowed to carry over the restart funds because the potential impact could drag into 2022. And so having some contingency there to support economic recovery or ongoing issues for people that might be vulnerable, that sort of thing, we could hold some of that back. So I hadn't heard that the government had required us all to spend it this year.
Yeah, that is in their, their actual letter to all of the, well, to the ones that, the letter that I received from the province did state that is, it was to be spent by December 31st, 2021, with the potential to be extended. But that wasn't confirmed.
It's not how we did it. My other question was just about the salaries and that. I'm still confused about that piece of carryover around $80,000 that the board had originally set aside to help with short-term staffing needs, and it's still sitting there. And why are we using it this year and how?
So that is a transfer from the Operational Surplus Reserve. So if we take that out, it doesn't actually change any expenses. It just increases the Operational Surplus Reserve balance. But for now, in the 2021 budget is shown that we're taking the remaining amount from the Operational Surplus Reserve based on that original resolution from 2019, I believe. And it can be used for any kind of recruitment and retention needs. So any kind of additional headhunting or any kind of additional support for people trying to move to the area, any kind, anything under the sun for more advertising potentially.
So we will use it as we need it. So it is, it's felt that it's useful. It's not just sitting there wondering what to do with itself.
Yeah, Melanie have, might have more input into that, but I know that she was considering what potential uses could be done with that funds, with those funds as well. And if they're not spent in 2022, we can just put them back to the Operational Surplus Reserve, which would just bump up that reserve balance.
Okay, thanks.
Director Richmond?
Thanks. I was kind of wondering the same thing because one of the reasons was, you know, we've agreed in the budget to include a human resources manager, which I feel is sort of a big part of that, that recruitment and retention piece. That person, I feel, is gonna be in charge of that file and will therefore. If there is still use for advertising and some other, and some other small cost to, to help recruit, then I'm all for it. But I don't want to see it sit there. And I do, you know, this budget's fairly tight, so I'm okay with it. But I worry about next year, looking at some of the jumps that we're gonna have to make next year. So, um, yeah, I didn't want to see that money just sitting there either. I feel like we've spent other money to accomplish some of those goals. A really quick question for the CAO, and it's just curiosity, and maybe you said it, and maybe I should ask earlier, but totally support the human resources position. I'm just curious why you called it a manager? Is there anybody reporting to this position?
Through the chair, I thank you. No, there's no plan for anybody to be reporting to this position. The intention is that that position will however, be participating with the senior managers. And we want the person to have a certain level of responsibility and autonomy. And that means that really, the title is more attractive to the caliber of candidate that we would like to attract to the position rather than connoting that anybody's going to be reporting to the position. Hopefully that helps. Thank you Chair.
Yeah, that's helpful. I just feel like there's an added price tag, like you say, but if you need that level of qualification, then that's fine. I had another question. Oh, I just wanted to comment as well that we have not approached the funds that, the COVID restart funds that way at all. We are anticipating being able to use them through 2022 as a, and most of my colleagues that I've spoken to are sort of approaching it the same way. So as much as, it's funny, as much as I've been at, at the village saying, I don't want to leave any money on the table here. Let's use it for whatever we can. I, in this case, I don't want to overspend if we have the ability to spend it next year. So I don't know if we can get clarification on that. I don't know if that's something that our CFO can look at, or maybe that's something we look at politically on some of our calls to push back and find out. But a lot of communities are planning their funds for two years. So, yeah, it kind of makes a difference. And the last thing about those funds is, you know, one of the uses that we're trying to take advantage of is outdoor recreational type stuff. We're kind of spread out all over the region, so it'll be a hard one. But I just wonder if there's any, I'm just throwing it out there, if there's any projects and trails, parks, that sort of thing, that can perhaps be accomplished with the restart funds that we can consider. I'm sure everybody has ideas. I know Director Crompton may have been approached by now, but somebody about the Gords Trail, about having parking lots on either end between Pemberton and Whistler and being able to put about a toilet facility in there. So that would really enhance those trails. So there's projects like that out there. I don't know how much we as a group want to consider, but I know that there are good use of the COVID restart funds if we do want to look at. I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
I had Director Rainbow and then Director Birch Jones. Tony, you're muted.
Sorry about that. My question's about the, the restart grant. It's $502,000 in total. Was that calculated on a per capita basis for population of the rural areas, the electoral areas? Is that how that, they arrived at that amount? So I've been getting a lot of stuff from other rural districts complaining about the disparity between electoral areas and municipalities that we haven't received as much as we, we really should have done. So I just wondered if staff had heard anything from any other regional districts. But first, could you confirm that is how that 502 was, was calculated?
I'm just reviewing that now.
Go ahead, Director Elliott, if you have something to share.
Just through the chair, I recall from one of our early conversations with the minister, former Minister of Municipal Affairs, when that question was asked, is that there, one of the requirements was that we submit our budgets or our tax dollars to regional districts first. That was a requirement. So municipalities had to pay their share regardless of the impact on our own budgets. And so knowing that that funding was coming, they calculated the share for regional districts with that understanding that your budgets were gonna be fully funded because of a requirement for municipalities to submit.
If I could just follow up then, but regardless of how they arrived at that total, if it is calculated or if it is intended for electoral areas, then I think when anything we talk about using it should be within the electoral areas and not in a municipality.
So I have, I have some answers to how the funding formula was calculated, if I can just interject. So it was based on three components. A flat funding amount plus two per capita amounts. The flat amount was 300,000 each to each regional district. The first per capita amount was based on the total regional district population, rural and municipal. And and the overall purpose was to ensure the very largest regional districts do not receive a disproportionate share of funding. The second per capita amount will be based on the rural population. The second per capita amount will be, they used 8 million per, sorry, $8.13 per rural population. It was $3.10 per rural and municipal population combined.
Okay, does that satisfy your question, Director Rainbow, or did you have other questions?
That satisfies the question. It's more complicated than I realized. But my comment remains the same. I think, you know, given that the municipalities have their own restart grants, I think that money should be spent in the electoral areas.
Director Richmond?
Just to be clear, I don't know if you're referring to my comment, Director Rainbow, but I wasn't suggesting that anything gets spent within municipalities. All the trails and parks I was referring to are in area rural, are in the electoral areas, including the trail I mentioned, which is in area C. So I don't know if you're just speaking generally, but just to be clear, I have no desire to spend any of the monies in our municipality. I was talking about electoral areas.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, were there any other questions about the restart grants or comments? Go ahead, Director de Maire.
I'm definitely in favor. I don't know where the Feed the Need campaign is at right now, if it's still moving forward or not. But I definitely would support funding for food security for the vulnerable people. And maybe we could do it in a couple of hits throughout the year.
Yeah. Director LaFrance, do you have an idea of how much of that money has been distributed at this time? I think we sent it all.
We received all of the grant. Is that what you mean? Sorry.
No, no, sorry, the Feed the Need money that was collected and then distributed through Cedar Sky Community Services. I believe we sent it all. I can ask, I can ask Director Morgan on that at another time. That's fine. Okay. All right. Sorry, Director Birch Jones, did you have a question? And then I see Director Elliott.
I have a few questions. There was a statement on page 12 about the accountant being offset with an NDIT grant, and I just didn't understand how that worked, if you don't mind.
Um, no, there, there is no, there is no offset. The NDIT, you're talking about the potential, oh, my brain. The student, like the actual worker that we're hiring, that's totally separate from the accounting position, yeah.
Okay. Um, I was happy to see the climate action position being full term, but full time. I'm super disappointed. We're not even looking at until maybe July. I'm feeling governments are just speaking about climate action with more urgency, but we're not actually.
but we're not actually doing too much. I presume that we are hiring and advertising as best we can. I don't see too much advertising, but I'm not really all that well linked into social media. Yes.
Go ahead, C A O Helmer.
Thank you, Chair. So the position is slotted for July so that we have an opportunity to hire and onboard the H R manager first. Because at this point, we haven't got an H R manager. So a large part of my time is actually being consumed with all of the currently posted positions that are out there, and there are quite a few. We still have the accountant position open. We have a position open in planning and development for a retired person. We have the communications and engagement position open and the H R position open, all of which we're actively recruiting for and dedicating time towards. So just the ability to continue to post additional positions without, it would take away from many other of the S L R D's important priorities. So that's the reason why it's put to July 1st. Certainly, if the board has an appetite and if the H R manager is able to be in place sooner, we can look at moving forward that. But that was our realistic best estimate of when we thought we could have somebody on board. There is quite a lengthy hiring process too, because we've got usually our postings out for a full month to make sure we can get a good selection of candidates. Then we have to screen through the applications. We have increased where we're communicating our positions. So we're gathering a larger number of applications right now than we were before. And that takes longer, of course, to go through. Then we've got pre-screening and a series of screening steps that we go through with the recruitment process before we select a final candidate. Then depending on where they are, they may need to give notice and other considerations around relocation. So I would say, given all of that, the July 1st date is probably on the optimistic side. But if this is an important priority to all of you, we'll make our every effort to do it as quickly as we're able to. Thank you.
Thank you, C A O. Director Birch Jones, did you have other questions?
Thank you. I saw that, did I understand that overtime was ineligible with the restart grant? Is that really, that struck me as just ridiculous. I mean, it was an emergency and of course it was overtime.
Overtime was, is eligible for the grant, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll stop. I think you're going to carry on to the next section. I'm having trouble keeping up with you as usual, Suzanne, because I'm from the PDF. So, okay, Karen, yeah, thank you.
Okay, were there any other questions on this, on this section, Director Elliott? Go ahead.
Just in response to whether we spend more of the restart funds, I think it's really, it's really hard because none of us have a crystal ball. But I would say to staff that if there's more you think we can do to ease the return to work, to prepare the office space for that or to prepare for the board returning, then we should be looking at spending that money this year so that people feel safe and comfortable coming back when we're allowed to do that. And then, you know, the province did say that transit is an essential service and deemed it to be an essential service. And the transit funds that B C Transit Communities received required them to maintain their current level of service. So, you know, if it's the difference between supporting our Area C transit and not, I do see that as an essential service. So I wouldn't want to see see that cut and would rather support the revenue loss with restart funds if we have to. That's one area for sure. So, so I think, you know, when the budget comes back, if staff feel there's more we should do around I T or preparing the office for a safe return, then it wouldn't surprise me to see those funds being used this year. But I agree with Director Richmond. I think we're allowed to carry over. At least that's the approach that many other communities have taken. So I don't feel the need to spend it all this year. I think we'll see other opportunities next year as well.
Thank you, Director Richmond.
I agree with Director Elliott's comments, and I certainly want the office to be in whatever shape we need to get it for our staff to feel safe. I would like us to really look at, I mean, I know nobody knows the future right now. And I don't know if I'm in denial or just very optimistic, but I'm hopeful that, you know, the return to the office will look normalish soon or sooner than later. And so I, and I want to qualify this statement, I'm totally happy to spend money from this fund to make our staff feel safe. This is not one of the question. What I'm saying is I'm reluctant to spend money making changes to the office now in the hopes that in the nearest future, we'll be able to get back to a normalish sort of work environment. And I also feel that, as in all organizations, the C A O and staff will be going through a process of analyzing, hey, what works better, as we've all discussed, what works better for who working remotely? And therefore, some people won't necessarily return to the office or not four or five days a week anyways. So I think there's a lot to sort out there. And so I'd like to sort that out in here, you know, definitely hear from the C A O and her thoughts to see before we go spending any money to on the office. I do appreciate that it can be done and happy to bookmark it, but those are my comments on that. The other thing, just quickly back to the $82,000, there is just a note here. In the benefit package, there was mentioned in that increase that there was relocation fees or funds available potentially through the benefit package, or did I misread that?
Yeah, I do put an estimated amount for relocation in the benefits expense line.
So just, just so there are potentially funds for there, that meaning we don't need to use the 82,000 potentially.
Potentially.
And this is a lob segue here, and I'll just throw it out for staff. I don't know, I know we did a benefit review and all that. Just speaking to lots of people, a number of people lately who have tried to access, not in our organization, who have tried to access mental health benefits and have come across a lot of challenges and barriers. So I just, I maybe just run out C A O, I don't know what our mental health benefits look like and who our provider is or how it all works. But if you haven't had a look and you do have a chance to have a look at what that looks like, I think that's an important thing, because I know a lot of providers and being told from mental health providers that a lot of the insurance providers are not giving what it takes or providing what it takes to get support. So big segue there. I just wanted to throw that out for the C A O. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Director Rainbow. Oh, Director Rainbow, you're on mute.
Just do this. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. Just following on from what Director Richmond was saying, but not so much mental health, more physical health. We've got a lot of people working from home. And I was reading a report the other day that there'd been a real increase in various types of workplace injuries, like back problems and neck problems and things like that, that they are connecting with the fact that people are sitting on wooden chairs at kitchen tables, sitting on a couch with a laptop on their knees, you know, doing the work from home, doing the work okay, but not doing, not sitting and working in a proper environment, proper sort of, what do you call it, an ergonomic, ergonomically secure environment. So my question would be, can we use any of this money to buy furniture, which could be placed in people's homes? To buy things like office chairs, proper chairs, to buy things like a proper desk and so on. In the long term, if we're going to have people working from home, I think there is an implication for us there. So I just like to sort of throw that out to the C A O, you know, C A O, sorry, for some comment. So can we use the money for that purpose? Do we want to?
Yep, we definitely can. A lot of people have actually taken their office chairs to their home. So that was something I did. And some actually took their stand up desks to their home as well. But yeah, we obviously, we tried to make people aware that they need to make it ergonomic for themselves so they're not going to strain their backs or things like that. At the very onset of people working from home, we tried to make sure everybody had a comfortable spot. Yeah, we can purchase additional items as well.
Okay, go ahead.
I think that would be a good use of some of this money. If we move things from the office to someone's home, maybe we buy something else for the office then. So that we can, so that maybe when things return to normal, we'll be in a situation where someone will work from home for three days a week, work in the office two days, that sort of hybrid situation. And we need the furniture in both places. So I would encourage us to investigate that and put some money into that. And obviously, people are on long-term disability because they've got a bad back.
Go ahead, C A O Helmer.
Thank you, Chair. Through the chair, just to respond. Since I've been here, we have had a number of discussions with the staff group in relation to this topic and for them to continue to identify if there are things that would make their life easier in working remotely and would support their needs ergonomically or otherwise, so that they could be effective and remain healthy in the jobs that they're performing that are so important to us. And that's something we'll certainly be continuing to do. I've begun some research into building the remote work policy. And remote work may look different, certainly, and some people may not be returning full time. So if there is a need to be looking at having a workstation both at home and at the office, so there's a need for additional chairs or suchlike as we move forward, we'll certainly be keeping that in mind, and that'll be part of the picture of how we build out our, where we serve people from and what positions are where in the future. So it does qualify as an expenditure. Currently, all of the needs are covered off, and we do have that touch point with the staff on a regular basis to make sure that their needs are met and that they can perform their work safely. And it will be further evaluated as we move forward and as this, the uncertainties that we're all looking at as this evolves. Thank you.
Okay, Director Rainbow, did you have any other comments for this section?
Oh, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Okay, does anybody else have anything? Director Birch Jones, go ahead.
My question's related to 1200 land planning and zoning. Just about the Okomuk Organic Farm Program. Suzanne, did that eventually get moved to land planning and zoning, so it's not an expense under PILT? Is that correct? That's terrific. Thank you very much.
So yeah, no, it was duplicated. It was duplicated in both. It was actually in general government twice. So what happened was we took the money from reserve into general government revenue, and we expended it in general government to transfer to land planning and zoning. And that is because, you know, area northern PILT funds are to be used for services within the regional district. So because that was related to planning, we moved it to planning. However, there was a miscoding and the posting that should have been a planning went to general government as well. So it was showing as a double expense in general government, and I just caught that with this version. This new version corrects that. So the general government budget now only has the one expense transferring those northern PILT funds to planning, and the planning now shows the expense as it should.
Thank you.
Okay, complicated with the regional districts and moving funds from service to service.
It's a, it's very, very puzzling work, and you do a wonderful job of explaining it. So thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Director Elliott, and then Director Stoner.
This one comment is you can see the impact of the employer health tax. The second you start adding people, I mean, it almost doubled. And you think about what a constraint that is on businesses that are trying to move out of a pandemic situation. And the fact that, yeah, we're bumped from 26,000 to 42,000. Anyway, just a comment again about some of the advocacy we might be doing through U V C M about how that impacts local governments as well as small business.
Thank you, Director Stoner.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. We approved a number of grant applications yesterday, and I wasn't clear if those had been captured in this draft budget. Or if that's still something that needs to be incorporated to make sure we don't have to do a financial plan amendment later on down the road.
If there are new projects that I haven't been notified of, I would have to make an adjustment to the budget. I always have to make an amendment to the budget anyway sometime during the year. So it's not the end of the world if I add it at a later time.
Okay. All right, let's, I think we can move on.
Okay, I just wanted to discuss the COVID-19 restart grant timeline. I just did a little bit of looking into that as we were discussing other things. And within the F A Q that we received from the province, there isn't a legislated deadline. But the province is anticipating that we spend these funds during the COVID response and COVID recovery periods, which is 2020 and 2021, and they just say, and possibly 2022. But there is no regulated timeline. So that's probably, it's probably going to be extended, but they just say possibly. Anyway, so continuing on, there is not much change in the planning budget. But like Vivian mentioned, there was just that adjustment for the northern PILT funds for $11,000 that was added in to the budget or corrected into the planning budget. So I'm just getting there now. Okay. Don't think I have anything more to discuss with the planning budget. Let me just verify. The online engagement software costs of 4,500, 4,500, we are now taking from the COVID restart grant. So we can go to the regional solid waste management budget. The only changes were in the 2020 actuels, and so that changed the operational reserve transfer. So the new operational reserve balance at the end of 2021 is 143,861. There's no requisition for that service. I'll just go to the U E S department, which is just a fully charged out department based on the services that they service. And we are using some COVID restart grants for extra hours work that were not able to be recovered under task. And that was because there was, we started our task before the province, I guess, officially started their provincial emergency task. So there was one day where we couldn't recover our extra hours work. And the regional district, the regional transit planning and infrastructure budget, it remains the same as last time. It shows the additional funds for that Area C review. The regional growth strategy budget remains the same as last time. And we can go to the Cedar Sky Trails if there's no other questions on the other budgets.
Go ahead, Director Richmond.
We talked about it last time. You know, we have a fair, our operational reserve balance exceeds the reserve guideline for R G S. for our, for RGS cost center as well as for our solid waste. And I know there was, you know, talk to apply, apply that over five years and even our Sea to Sky Trails. There's a surplus carried over almost for the full requisition again. So this year's budget is nice and tight and I thank staff for that and we're not seeing any increases. So I don't necessarily want to make any changes now, but I just wanted to note again that those reserves are actually higher than the guideline. And if we're looking at substantial tax increases next year, perhaps we can use those to smoothen out the five-year plan so that we can not hit our taxpayers all at once. But again, this year it's, it's a nice tight budget with minimal increase. So I'm not worried about it here, but I just want to make that note because again, it exceeds the guideline and I don't like leaving taxpayers' money sitting there. Either, either it should be in their bank accounts or we should be using responsibilities the way I look at it. So it's good to see those reserves and I'm, and I'm hopeful it'll help us lessen the impact over the next couple of years. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll just touch on the reserve balances. So Sea to Sky Trails isn't the full regional board. So we wouldn't be able to transfer those reserve funds to general government because area A and B don't participate. The regional growth strategy as well, area A doesn't participate. So they're not the exact same participants and I wouldn't be able to transfer those reserve funds to general government. But the other ones, yes.
Okay.
So we'll go to the Sea to Sky Trails budget. There is a small amount recovered through the COVID restart grant for some social distancing signs. The operational surplus reserve is 204,369 at the end of the budget, which is anticipated to be used for additional trail additions. I think we are looking for grant funding to support some of those trails. So it'll be, it'll be in, it'll be with those grant funds that we use, the reserve funds. And we've added the spreadsheet for the Sea to Sky Trails by section. So, so you can see what was completed and what still remains as part of the project to be completed. Any questions on the Sea to Sky Trails?
Go ahead Director Rainbow. Tony, you're muted.
I'm a slow learner. Sorry about that. Director Richmond was talking about toilets earlier and maybe we could stick one at the end of a trail, which I think is a very good idea. Saves people going off into the bush. So my question would be, since we've got rather a lot of money in that Sea to Sky Trails account, could, could we use it for a few toilets at different places? They come in at around $16,000 apiece. Was that legitimate use of that money? You know, located at one of our trails that are trailhead.
Let's just review the, the service mandate. So when this service was created, we obviously had to go through public consultation and yada, yada. And then the service mandate is that the service provide regional trails for recreational purposes within the Sea to Sky corridor. And that's all it discusses. I think that we want to discuss this with Allison, the Trails Coordinator, to see, because I know she has these funds earmarked for future parts of the trail. So I'd have to discuss the future five-year plan and specifically what she thinks will be available, if anything, for, for those kind of things, for toilets or anything like that.
Because you'd probably also have to add in servicing for them indefinitely.
Right. And so the servicing portion might not be applicable to that service.
I see Director Elliott with a comment or a question.
Maybe other board members can enlighten me why this trail system doesn't extend from Squamish South to Area D. The references are all Squamish North. But I know Director Rainbow and I have talked about the potential for a trail from Britannia to Squamish. I know residents in my community are interested in that.
Director Crompton, then Director Rainbow.
Oh. So the history of it was that there was a, a water trail that was connected from the lower mainland to Squamish and then a ground trail to Pemberton. And I think there was a long-term idea of, of trying to connect down to south, but it's a way, 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 way more challenging piece. However, we did transition a lot of the focus of the Sea to Sky Trail over the last few years to the Friendship Trail and, and the chunk between Pemberton and, and Whistler. And I'd sure be interested in seeing, though way more expensive and way more challenging, the south being taken on. I think that'd be exciting. For me, the idea of a connecting trail from Britannia to Squamish or like Vancouver to Squamish would be one of the best trails in the whole universe.
That's a big statement. Director Rainbow.
Yeah, it's too bad Allison's not on the call because we actually are undergoing a study. I believe it's happening right now from Lions Bay north up through Furry Creek, Britannia and so on. So that, that will give us some indication of what is involved and how much it would cost. I certainly think from, from Lions Bay to Furry Creek is probably the, the most difficult part because of various things that the railway gets in the way, the highway, creeks and things like that. I think from Britannia through to Squamish is not, I, I don't see that as being as difficult, especially if you could use part of the, you know, if you wanted to use part of the hydro right away, that would, and I don't think they would object to that because what, what a trail does is tends to keep the vegetation under control, which is what they want to do anyway. So I, I, I think Squamish to Britannia is, is a definite possibility. And I know that the local developer here is working with a local volunteer group to work on trails from Furry Creek to Britannia. So I, I think, I think it's something we should definitely take into consideration. Maybe have Allison come and give us an update at some point as to where we're at with, with that study. And the Marine Trail. I've been talking to a guy named Steve Best who's with the, whatever that association is called. And they have a, a couple of campsites in Area D on the west side of the sound that he's talking to me about right now and he's looking for some, some support. But they're also interested in developing a couple of sites on the, on the east side between Squamish and, and, and Furry Creek. And I'm not exactly sure where they are. I, I, he's just sent me a couple of names and I don't recognize the names. So one of them may be in Squamish, one may be, they may both be in Squamish. I'm, I'm not sure. So i- if, if they're looking at, at developing the Marine Trail more, there's, there's maybe some links we could look at there as well to, you know, from, from a walking trail to, to the Marine Trail. I don't know. It's, it's, and it's something that I think we, we would benefit from having Allison bring us an update and a plan of future.
Okay, um, any other comments to this? Yeah, go ahead.
So if we wanted to move in that direction, Ms. LaFrance, is this the service area that could capture that? Or would we need a different one? At a future date, I'm not talking about this budget, but like just so I can conceptualize, does, does moving south from Squamish need a new service area or would it fit in the Sea to Sky Trail?
It's a good question. I believe so. It's, you know, it is Area D as, I think as long as we remain within Area D, it's fully covered.
Okay, thanks.
Is, are the municipalities not included then in this service then or is it just the electoral areas?
Yeah, without Area A and B. So it's Area C and D and then I believe Pemberton and Squamish and Whistler.
Oh, so, okay. So technically then we could use this budget to go all the way down to Lions Bay. At some point in the future.
Yeah, CEO Helmer.
Uh, thank you Chair. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that we did have a report came forward in November on this topic because there had been a prior resolution at the board to look into this. And so one of the requests was to, an option rather, was to allocate money from this particular budget in the financial plan for an assessment on potential routes to determine the feasibility of extending the route from Squamish to Lions Bay.
Thanks for that reminder.
Okay. I feel like we're going to have another discussion about this later on today. All right. Anything else? I think we're good. Uh, Director LaFrance, where do you want to go from here?
Oh, so that's the budget review. I can go into the non-market change review. It kind of goes hand in hand with the requisition increases. I'm just getting there with my reports.
Do you want us to receive this section by itself, Director Clark? Or we can just receive both together?
Thanks Chair. So do you mean item five, like receive 5.2?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go ahead and receive that and then move on to 5.3. Thank you.
Moved receipt by Director Birch Jones, seconded by Director DeMar. Any further discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, so the 2021 assessments, non-market change review, there is reports available online through VC assessments and they review what increases in the current role were based on non-market change. And non-market change to them is boundary extensions, property class changes, exemption, status changes, additions or deletions, inventory changes and zoning changes. So there's table in that report that shows a total non-market change percent based on the increase, the total assessment change in 2021. So for example, Area A, they have the total non-market dollar value at $350,800. And that represents a 0.15% non-market change out of their total assessment change of 3.83%. So 3.68, they say, is market related. So the majority of, and I also separated the residential only so you can see just the residential increases for non-market change at the second part of that same chart. And this is for all, all of the combined non-market changes for 2021. So Area C and District Squamish and Village Pemberton show the highest non-market change percentage based on their total assessment change in 2021 for all of combined non-market changes. The second, the second chart in this report just focuses on inventory changes. This will give a better idea of any additional tax base that's available in 2021. So I also separated just the residential view as well. So the total non-market change includes all the property classes and then the residential is obviously just residential. So for looking at just the inventory changes, Area C and VOP have the largest non-market in percent increase for inventory. District Squamish has a marginal amount as well, 1% out of their 9.76% total increase. And it's similar with the residential view. So both Area C, Village Pemberton and partially District Squamish have more inventory in their 2021 assessment role. And if anybody wants details, I actually get a full detailed report that shows each folio, the 2020 property value and, and land value and then the 2021 changes. But it's, it's a huge report, so I didn't add this into the, yeah. Any questions from the board?
That is a really, really complicated piece. Hard to wrap your head around. Any other questions or comments to this? Nope. Seeing shaking heads. Okay.
Move receipt.
Okay, move by Director Rainbow, seconded by Director Elliott. Any discussion? Nope. Seeing none. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Uh, Director Richmond, was that your hand or were you scratching your face? Okay. Um, all right. Well, thank you very much Director LaFrance. I think that is good.
Thank you.
Have a good day. All right, um, 6.1 Chairs verbal update. I don't have anything new that I haven't already shared. Uh, does anybody else want to add anything? No. Okay. Any late business? Director Clark? No. Okay. All right, now we are going, could I have someone move that we move into closed? Move by Director Stoner, seconded by Director Crompton. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.